Call this June 29th, special meeting at 6:32 PM. We'd like to welcome everybody. And at this time, we'd like to do a moment of silence and then we will call that out eventually.
If you would, if you would remember, if your brother passed away in his back three days.
You have the flag. Let's allege it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, adoption of the agenda.
Who to adopt the agenda is for them?
My second.
Motion by Mr. Perillo, second by Mr. Talby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries by zero. Item number two, discussion and consider approval of options for returning to school. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Christie.
In your packet, you have, gave you a copy of the survey that we sent out to parents. We used, have used a lot of that information to make some plans. We had a back-to-school task force. It's been me once to twice every week for the last month and a half probably. We've come up with, and it's pretty similar to plans that I think you're going to see represented statewide. This is where everybody seems to be landing. The plans vary on your paper there for Plan A, bringing everybody back to Plan D to start the year out the way we finished last year. I would add that in any, in all of those plans, one of the commonalities is that if there's any parent of any student that has health issues, or any parent of any student who has just deep concerns about sending their child back to school under whatever conditions that we put in place, there is an online and digital learning version of everything that we're doing that's put in place at all levels. I feel confident with the, I feel most confident of all of the entire return piece with the academic piece. I think we're the strongest there that we could possibly be on the academic side of things. The difficulties lie in how you bring them back, transportation, food services, in the classroom, social distancing, wearing masks, not necessarily in that order. But if you look at Plan A, I've talked to principals, principals, depending upon what level of education they're in, they're a little bit split on this. I can tell you that from looking through these and talking with other superintendents and where we are right now, my recommendation would be Plan A, first one you see there. That's bring all students back with the exception of those whose parents have concerns, or any ones, parents of any students that has medical concerns. That's the, the one where, with the changes for bus transportation and requirement of wearing masks, we're now at a spot where we can put our normal loads on our buses if they're wearing masks. If they're not and refuse to, then that creates a different issue. So we were making plans on how we would have alternate buses and some buses to back up and help support some of these routes that has several on them. We would not be checking temperatures at the bus with this Plan A. All temperatures would be checked at the building as before they enter the building. All staff and all students would have their temperatures checked and questions asked of them at the school, at the school level. Of course, we're working on the plans on how, how that would work. Any, I might add that any of the other plans that you see, it was a kind of a split between Plan A and Plan C. Plan C, the other one, that, that there was some, at this point in time where we are right now, there was some support for Plan C, which is bringing all the students back K-212 only at halftime. Bringing half, half of school kids in at, on Monday and Tuesday, and then bringing the other half in on Thursday and Friday, even Wednesday of each week for an NTI day. It could also be a day that we do deep cleaning of buildings and all our buses, sanitization of all of us. So that was the reason for putting the split in the middle of the week instead of having Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, Thursday. That gave us a day in the middle. So that was the two that got the most interest of principals for varying reasons. The thought process on Plan A's, I still believe that no matter how good the computer education is, the computer programming, nothing can take the place of a teacher in front of the classroom talking to students and working with students. Now, if you go down those plans, and when you look at those, as far as educationally, in my opinion, Plan A through D, they're in that order of the most, of the most sound. When you start talking safety, that's a different story. Obviously, the more students you bring back, the more we're going to have to deal with the wearing of masks, social distancing and those things. So the more students, you increase the possibility of an illness in the building. But I think with the plans we put in place and what we're looking at academically with, with small groups, working with small groups that may wear masks, that would reduce the numbers in the classrooms where you could probably do some instruction in the classroom without having to wear a mask. They are still talking about eating in the rooms, not using the cafeteria. We're making a push for that to be able to use the cafeteria to eat if they're spread out six foot or more. So I don't know where that'll go with these plans, even with the latest that the governor and the CDC folks and KDE released this last week. There's even still some changes, I think, to come from that. I think cafeteria is going to be one of those. I think they, they're not going to open them back up unless there's some change. I don't think where kids can go through and pick up their lunches, they're going to be seated and the lunches will be delivered to them just like we're passing them out outside for those that we're giving away now. They're still under the requirements that they be bagged or boxed lunches, no silverware, all throwaway things of that nature. Students, you know, even condiments or anything, those have to be passed out. You can't have those where students reach in and get them. Everything has to be passed out. And that's why they're still recommending to lower grades, they eat in their building, in their, in their classrooms. And they're discussing the possibility, like I said, of maybe using the cafeteria to eat, but not to serve any kind of food. Maybe they hand them a bag or pick up a bag off the table as they come in, they maybe could sit spaced. We have mark off or just put chairs spaced appropriately, and they could have sit in those chairs.
What, you said your principal, what were the, what were your votes?
It was a, basically a four to four tie. It was odd because I had, I would expect probably at the, at the junior high and high school, they were in favor of C, because they have larger numbers, and I get that, I understand that. And that would cut, that would reduce the numbers of kids that would be in the building at any given time. I understand that. There was two elementaries that were for C. And our conversations there was the fact that, given in the elementary classroom settings, if you reduce those numbers to cut them virtually in half, now you're working with a much lower teacher-student ratio. You may be able to get the numbers low enough in those classrooms that they can socially distance and eliminate the need for masks in the classroom. And it gave the teachers more opportunity to work one-on-one with the students. Because they felt that they could deliver the instruction even better. All these scenarios we're talking about, we're going to record, we're going to record classroom instructions so that it can be played back to those at home if they need to watch at some time. Those kinds of things can be recorded and given to the students that may be working from home for whatever reason they may choose to do that.
We have A, the other four?
A, we would record so that those that choose to work from home would have those videos.
No, you said they were four to four.
Four to four, A and C.
A and C, okay.
With the technology in there's classroom to record classroom, uh, classroom?
Well, Justin's not in right now, he could probably answer that quicker than I could. Of course, you have, there's many ways recording can be, something simple as a phone recording to, to download and then download it from a, onto a, onto a thumb drive or something sort of like that. So I, I don't know that we've got the actual recording equipment. Justin, how capable are we of recording instruction in each classroom?
Recording instruction in each classroom. When teachers get Chromebooks, they can record in their classroom.
Those are ordered?
Yeah, tougher to do synchronous because we're tougher to do like Google Meet.
We're talking about for replaying.
Oh, yes, when teachers get Chromebooks, they can record it and post it to their Google Classroom.
While they're instructing the kids in the classroom?
They can record it while they're instructing, and when the instruction's done, they just press stop and upload it to the drive.
Well, I, I kind of think as a board, we're kind of on a slippery slope here where we start looking and jumping into these plans. And I did talk to Mr. Christie earlier today, it seemed like, maybe based on the conversation I had with Timbers, conflicting information that comes from KDE, that comes from KSBA. You know, the word from KSBA that they had on their website is the role of the local school board is to manage and control the overall operations of the district. As with many issues, the detailed planning and implementation work involved in reopening schools during the COVID-19 pandemic will be done by district school administrators and staff. I just, you know, and, and we can already tell, you know, we're talking about, we have four to four right now. We've got half here, half there, that there's some issues within the school. And I, I just believe that, that it is our role as a board to make sure that we have a safe opening of school. It's our role every year to do that. That's why we approve discipline codes and things like that that were presented to us by the district staff, which is the same thing I think should be here. This district staff should find the solution. Well, I don't know if there is a solution to stop right there because we're in uncharted territory here. So I'm not sure anybody's going to jump out here and say that they've got the right solution. But I just believe that our staff, our administrative staff and our teachers have all got to be on board and they've all got to be going. And all these plans are good, and I'm sure they've all been approved by everybody. But I think we're going to learn, when school starts, we're going to learn something every day. And whatever plan we go with on the start of school may not be the plan we have two or three days later. So I think we've got to come up with something that's going to be very flexible and something that's, you know, personally, I, I like having kids in school, kids in seats. I mean, that's the way school is supposed to be. But I also think that because we've got NTI days and, and ways to take advantage of that, that sometimes maybe it's not good to go five straight days to school. Maybe we should go two or three days in and take a couple of days off with NTI. Not a couple of days off, I don't want to say it that way, but a couple of days with, with NTI. Because I think there's just a lot of things that, that we're going to have, you know, we've got to be prepared if there is an outbreak. And if we don't have NTI days already built into the calendar, then that makes, you know, you get a phone call the night before, you know, we're not going to school next day because we've got an outbreak. But if we got the NTI already in place, people already know that that's part of our process there. Just based on people that I talk to, when you put, you know, 5,000 people together in increments of 500 to 600 at a time, I don't know how we'll not have a case. I, I really don't. And I think we have to be prepared for that. But as a board, and in thinking as a former principal, I wouldn't want the board to say, alright, you have to do that when I'm thinking it doesn't work for my school. But I think these guys have got to get together to come up with a plan that follows, you know, we have board policies that deals with, you know, health and safety for personnel, board policies that deal with the safety of students during epidemics and what that says. And you know, and I just look, some of the things, the communication we need to have with parents, you know, the first notification on our contagious disease of parasites, board policy 09213. Your parent, legal guardian, or other person or agency is responsible for a student and is responsible for a student shall notify the student's principal if the student has any medical conditions, which is defined by the Cabinet for Health and Family Services. And it goes on through there. Most parents probably don't know that. So I think that's definitely something that has to be out there and has to be communicated. But your kid's got a fever, it's your responsibility to call that principal and tell them they're not coming to school, rather than us get them to school, find out they've got a fever, or if somebody in that family has COVID, and you don't report that. Now, you know, obviously, this is not law, we're not taking them to jail, but they still, I mean, they have a responsibility. But I think they need to, to know that. So I, I just think we're getting way into the weeds when we start telling people how to line up and, and things like that within schools. And I would rather hear a plan coming back from districts of saying, this is how we're addressing the policies that we have in place. This is how we're addressing what the governor's guidelines have given us. And Mr. Christie, I don't know if you looked into any more about, you know, discussion I've had and the kind of conflicting information goes, Mr. Christie was telling me that KDE is pretty much telling him that boards need to pass a plan. Well, I can understand where we acknowledge a plan that says it fits in with all of our safety, but I'm very uncomfortable saying, you're going to do this when I haven't talked to a principal, I haven't talked to a teacher, or those things. I mean, that has to come from those people as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's a, I agree with a lot of what you said, Mr. Perillo, it's a lot to take in. I, I think by understanding what you're saying, Mr. Christie, is you're interpreting KDE as that this is a board-level decision, kind of like we set the calendar, we set the starting times, et cetera. And you'd like to get an indication of what, what would be the top thing that your, your team should plan for knowing. And that's certainly a, a good point, that this is going to be a fluid situation. We might say, well, plan for.
We know that, we all realize, Dick, that you could, whatever we planned the first day could change by the end of the first week of school. We might be right back, we don't know that, but we're planning for that. Whichever we choose, obviously D would be, would be the plan, but, but we're planning for that. And we'll have things in place. Now, we did talk about on each of these, being able to do just four days and doing that Wednesday, taking, here's an NTI day to do deep cleaning and some stuff to help some things there.
I, I think we have to take, because you have unlimited number of NTI, I think we have to take advantage of that. And, you know, we have to get the technology in that, that we have. I, I mean, I would love to see us get this technology, a way to get this to our students several weeks before school started. Maybe have virtual open houses where you can go and do this, and then people can communicate back. You know, we don't have internet, or internet's not working, you know, where are your hotspots? But you know, those type of things, what are the problems that, that kids are having? You know, we've talked about, you know, the busing thing, that maybe we could go pick up kids and bus them to a hotspot or something, I know there's issues that we're dealing with there, obviously. You know, we're, we're sitting on a thing, and normally when a school system takes on a, a project this size, you're asking for volunteers to come in and help. But, you know, KDE's telling you, keep as few people in the school as possible, so we can't even go out to the people that we think can help us. You know, again, I, I mean, such uncharted territory that we're looking at right here. But I, I think we have to plan to adjust is what we're going to have to do. And I would love to just hear the plan. Again, we got four this way, four that way. I mean, you know, you've got a kid in two different schools, that's, that's a little bit harrowing right there to think about that. So, you know, I would love to, to see our administrators get on board so that they're going to their staff and saying, this is the way that, that we've all decided that we're going to do this. And I don't know how you can get out not having a combination of things, I really don't. I just, you know, I sit and think, being in that position before. And guys, I, I can't help but think what principals are thinking right now. What do you do? I mean, how do, you know, what happens with this situation? I think every night, I think of a new situation that crops up. I mean, how do you handle it when a kid gets COVID? What if it's a kid in preschool, does that affect everybody? What if it's a kid in Phoenix County, does that affect everybody? What if it's a teacher that calls in sick over the weekend that's had 150 kids in their classroom? What, I mean, how does that pull in here? And I'm sure the health department, I mean, you guys are working with them as well too.
Of course, they've been involved in this part up to this point now.
All the way through, and, and, and I don't know if they have the resources or whatever to have people in our buildings, probably not. I, I mean, they're probably, you got their hair pulled out the way it is now, I, I don't know. But there's definitely going to have to be somebody that we're in close, allies to.
I have one thing about our transportation with the new camera systems that you all approved here some months back, and those are being installed over the summer. With that, we have the ability, the bus driver has the ability to snap a picture, like when they pull into the school lot, before any kid gets up out of their seat or gets off the bus, they could snap a picture that shows the location of every child. And in talking with the health department, that's going to be huge for buses and contact tracing because they can tell who they were sitting beside, even go back, pull video if they were up and moved. And we're looking at pulling that shot before, when they, before they unload at the school and as soon as they load before they leave the school each afternoon. And, and, and saving those so that we've got those in case something up, we can go back by date and pull contact trace.
Then they get off that bus, then they get off that bus.
Well, yeah, and we don't know if we have something happen, how, how far they're going to go with this contact tracing. Because they keep playing it down like, if they're not with them, if they're not within this proximity for an hour or two hours, and they're probably going, I don't know that. We, I've not known anybody that's been a part of the contact tracing. I know we're up to 131 or 132 cases in Clark County right now.
I think we have to do the best we can with the guidelines that's been given to us by KDE and the governor. But we have to prepare for, what are we going to do when cases come up? I think that is going to be the key. You know, I've said it to other people, you know, the range of people out here right now is from paranoid to defiant. And all those people, what I always say about schools is your whole community comes together when you, when you open the school doors. You know, you're not separated off into different restaurants or different places. Every one of those people come to the same door. And we've got to be prepared for, you know, what happens if kids are defiant, parents are defiant. What happens, you know, if a kid doesn't want to leave a classroom or, you know, I, I mean, they're just, I mean, there's a lot of things. I really, really am worried about our younger kids. We want to make school a warm and inviting place and walk into that place with a mask on. Teacher says, stay away from them. And it's, you know, I, I just, you know, I feel for those people that are in those positions, and I feel for the kids too. I mean, there's an experience that we're not getting, but I don't know that we're going to get any better by staying at home and looking at it on the screen. I, I really don't. So I, I mean, you guys have got your job set out for you. Every person, everybody has to take it serious that you've got from custodian to principal to cafeteria to page to subs, how are we going to do substitutes? I don't know how many people are going to want to sub. Maybe we should think about hiring permanent subs for a, for a certain amount of time to have in schools and stay there at that time. So I don't know. I, I think there's a lot of things that, that I would like to see put in front of me, this is the way that we're going to do it. And it meets all these policies that we have, rather than me saying, this is the way that we're going to do it.
Are all of the principals on that committee that?
They, this week, they will be, all will be in. We've talked to them, they will all be. We've worked on the academic piece primarily up to this point, to make sure we have the academics covered no matter what we do, whether in school or whether we're out of school. And we just, just this past week with the guys from KDE, we just got to the point to get to these four here. And we're confident that we can make any one of these four work. So this week, the principals will all be a part of it and will start. And from, from after probably the first two weeks in, then we'll go to the building levels and the teachers will come along and plan this.
That's kind of another question. Have we spoken with teachers? How many teachers do we have that are uncomfortable with coming back? And how many teachers, you know, have got children or they've got parents that they have to stay home with at this time? And will those people be able to be counted being at school and doing something virtually? Or is that considered part of their simply? Or I, I know the, the family emergency leave by the last layer was extended all the way through the 30th, 31st of December, I believe. So that covers us at least through this semester. And I believe that when they come back, they'll go ahead and extend that even further. But, you know, but that, you know, you have three teachers, three or four teachers out of the elementary grade that can't be there by, for a legitimate reason? You know, how are we, you know, I think we have to find that out pretty early too. And I, I think sometimes, you know, those teachers have got to be in there on that, on that front line right there saying, well, yeah, you're planning all this right here, but, you know, I've got seven staff members that are not going to be here. So that all has to be intertwined in together. Really difficult to, really difficult to do, I think.
So, Mr. Perillo, you're thinking that it's not the board's decision to decide which plan or which way we go, should be the district administrators to develop a plan?
Well, I, I think we have to acknowledge and say, that fits, that, that fits with what our policies are saying we do. Because I mean, if Mr. Christie's saying all these things are approved and that we can do the things, my biggest concern to that is, who's on board? That's what I want to make sure of, is that who's on board? Right now, we're here, we got four to four. So we have A and C, and somebody else said, I don't know why they do that, I don't want to do A, I want to do, you know. I mean, I think that, that if there ever was a time that everybody has to be on board with what we do, this is it. And I, I just think that we've got to get, start communicating out there to parents about, this is, this is where we're at right now. And let's hear what you have to say. Because, you know, every time I have a conversation with somebody, something else comes up that I didn't think about. And, and I think that's what's going to happen, is that we've got to make sure that we get as much input as possible. And, you know, we can talk about the do norm, it's not the do norm, it's not even close to norm. I mean, you know, what we're trying to do. And, but I just think the better buy-in that we have, and that's what I'm looking for, is that I don't want to make a decision that makes half the schools mad. You know, not that, if it was my decision, but I don't, you know, on a day-to-day basis, like I said, you know, this is what KSBA says, and then they give a list of the four things the laws allows us to do. It's like setting calendars, you know, and doing things like that, spending money. If there's more money needed for a certain plan, that's up to us to approve that. But on a regular basis, when we open up school, you know, I don't go out to high school and tell them how to get off the bus and where they go to cafeteria, they go to GM or wherever else. But this is what, you know, this is what this plan is doing right here, is telling you what to do. Now, if it's within the board's purview to say, yes, we're going back to school, we're going to hold the NTI, maybe you're, maybe that's a little bit more. But you still probably don't have the buy-in of teachers based on what we're seeing right now.
Well, the, the survey is evidence, when you look at the survey, you're not going to get 100% buy-in on anything that we do.
Well, I, but I know that we're not there, but, but, you know, you have to control your administrative staff and you have to say, everybody has to be in there, we're doing this. And, you know, you just going to have to lock arms and go on. I mean, that's, that's just.
Well, and that's where we were at the end of the day today, at the conversation with the event. If you choose A, B, C, or D, we're together, we're in it, we'll make it work. This is where we are, whichever you choose tonight, that's what, that's what we'll, we'll be prepared to move forward with. We'll start planning on this Thursday as a whole, as a whole district administration.
That's kind of what I'm getting from, is people just want to know, just point us in a direction of which way we're going to go here.
Again, you know, which way we go, maybe which way we go the first day. I mean, I, I think that I want to see, you know, a comprehensive plan from the, from the start of, alright, we're going to take temperatures when kids get off of bus, alright? How you going to unload kids? You know, what happens if four buses come in? How are you handling that, four buses of kids come in at the time? When you start saying you're going to hold kids on a bus, high school grade, it's 95 degrees. You know, you know, and they may have a plan for it, but I want to know how you're going to do that. You've got 300 kids to drive up in a car at the same time, and they all sit there and wait. You know, how are they going to get, you know, what are they going to do? And then we also know, you know, I, I speak from the high school level. Normally, you come to school and it's a wide range of an hour, hour and 15 minutes. You go at breakfast, you go to GM, or you go to the auditorium, or someplace like, there's a collector. The way I understand it, you get out and you go directly to your classroom. So there's a couple of problems with that. Number one, all of your staff are going to be in classrooms, okay? All of your staff's in classrooms, who's directing kids and monitoring? So I mean, those are some issues that you have there. So I, I mean, I would like to just see from the high school, how are you handling drivers? How are you handling buses when they, when they, when they come in here, okay? And how are you handling cafeteria? What are you going to do? What are you gonna do with changes, I mean, class changes or things such as that? Having those, all the other stuff go with, you know, with being in a high school as well. And, and, you know, the same way with, with element, at least at the high school, you've probably got three really good drop-off points. I mean, you could drop off out front, you could drop at the location of school, you could drop at the gymnasium. Most other schools you come to, you got one.
For two, for one, for parents, for both of you.
But, you know, as far as with your buses or whatever, and, and how are you gonna, how are you gonna get them in? Especially those first days when you're wanting, and parents are holding them by the hand and bringing them in.
One of the things that we, we do, that we have talked, that we are gonna do in the month of August is that we will have them come in by grade, by grade. And they're gonna do open house by grade. So the instructions and we can go through some things there, they can actually give out computers, do those kinds of things. That's in the planning before we end it, we have to, on the schedule, on the, on the schedule or the calendar. It's front level with teachers coming in up front. So we would have more time with them, spend with them on the PD, on development plan, what it's gonna look like when kids come in, if the kids come in. We're, we're starting to survey the teachers. We, we finished the transportation department, high school's finished, we're starting to get figures back on the others of teachers that feel uncomfortable about coming back. High school has two. We know those can automatically go into the side, be beat into the side, work with the online, things that won't have to be in a room, they can even do it from home on the online. So we're starting to get those numbers in. We're starting to get the numbers that work, that's gonna be common to all four of these plans, so.
So how, as a, I'm sorry to interrupt, how often, how often has this committee been meeting, you said?
We've been meeting at least once as a whole committee, once a week for the last month and a half. We've been meeting subcommittees a couple of times a week. We've got, we've got four or five, four or five committees total. And, and we meet as a whole at least once a week and each of those subcommittees meet with principals, teachers, and other people at least another time or two a week.
Who's leading the committee?
That's the committee chair of it is our nurse, is our head of our nursing. She's, she's the committee head when we all come together, she's.
I mean, I, I agree with Mr. Perry though, I mean, I'd like to see more of a, what the details are about the plan. If you've been meeting once a week for weeks, surely there's something in writing or something, you know, that is common to all these plans, obviously. But, you know, this is just a, you know, these plans that you, that we're looking at, it's pretty generic. You know, we don't have any idea how some of these other details are gonna work. And you may not either and it's gonna change, but surely there's some sort of document that y'all have been working on that can be shared.
There are documents, but I will say that we haven't got into the, we don't have a document that shows all the plan, but we haven't, we didn't know if that's what we're gonna do. And that's been kind of the catch is that we're gonna meet and bring all the people together if we sit and work on Plan A for a month and it ends up that, as, when we come in, that you all would rather see not all the kids brought back to town and we've wasted a lot of time. We just, we're looking for some direction. Are you looking for all the kids to come back or are you all on board with only half of them coming back? That gives us a little bit more direction where we can refine, because every one of these has got, this package, 10,000 things that's gonna be associated with each. We've talked about where they come in, table setup, we've got the, the digital thermostats already, we've got 60 or so up here, we've got another 48 on order that should be here the next few days. We've got 12,000 masks, I mean, we're gathering all this stuff that will work for any of these. We're trying to do all the things that we can that would meet, help us meet any of these. We're just looking to narrow it down. And if you want us to narrow it down, then we'll, we'll narrow it down.
You have a comment here on Plan C that this will, this for food services, I think it's Plan C, I'll make sure I understand correctly. Foods, uh, it's actually Plan B, food service cost will increase because of logistics. I mean, so if we're, we're saying that if we alternate kids where kids are in school one day and not the other, then we're responsible for feeding them all day.
We're responsible for feeding them all day.
So we have to identify who's gonna be in school and who's not and then, and be able to feed, provide them meals and take it to them.
Prepare meals for those in school, prepare meals for those.
That's how it's worked, I'm not.
So there, there's a, there's an increase, there's an increase in cost in producing that, but there's a decrease in the number of students you actually feed. So you're gonna increase the cost on what you're preparing because you have to go two different directions, but you're gonna, you're gonna lessen your revenue. Because all those kids, that other half of the kids that are home, you're not gonna feed all of, all of that 50% that stays home those days won't eat. So you lose some revenue on that. And now you're just having to split your staff, part of your staff preparing meals in the school that can be taken out and it's probably gonna follow them to cooks to deliver those meals to the rooms.
I, I think that's what, what, what I'm talking about is I would wanna see that plan of how all that's gonna work and.
And that's what.
If it takes meeting twice a week or whatever it does, but, and then I think you've gotta bounce this stuff off of, off of, off of parents too. I think, you know, our website needs to be updated with all this stuff every time that it comes out there that this is, we got a plan, this is what's working on. You know, just, and I don't know how far we are along, but I, I talked to a teacher in a different district that is coming back on the 26th, I believe. This teacher teaches in the physical aid department. They already know how they're gonna conduct their classes. They've already talked about how they're gonna conduct their classes, how they're doing this. I, I don't know if we've come that far or what we've done with any of that, but I just think that we have to see a plan that meets the policies that we have in place. And, you know, I, I know we're sitting here saying, well, we want a direction on which way to go. Well, the direction is there with which way, you know, we're, you know, I wanna see kids in seats. Some people are paranoid about kids being in seats. You know, I wanna make good use of NTI. Some people may not want to do NTI or may not have the capabilities or may not have the internet connection or whatever. But we have got to put a plan together that addresses, you know, like Mr. Tobbie's talking about, that addresses, well, tell me how we're gonna feed these kids and be able to do this, alright? That teacher's gonna teach from home because they can't be in school. Who's monitoring that teacher's class at that time? I wanna know who that is at that time. So I mean, because I mean, if you're assigned to physics class and the physics teacher's not there, somebody's gotta be there to monitor it, even if the teacher's at home teaching his class virtually right there. So I, I don't know how we can get by without some combination. The teachers I've talked to keep telling me that I have to see my kids in person for a certain amount of days. Maybe it's one day, two days, I don't know. And I'd say depending on the level that you are with your kids, you know, how many times you might need to do. Maybe, you know, a social studies class over here could see them once a week. Maybe a physics teacher has to see them twice or three times a week. I just think that, that, that we have a lot of details that it's gonna take a lot of people to, to come in here. And I know we're not gonna hit every detail. And, you know, but I, I think that I would love to see a plan that would say, this is what we're gonna do first day of school. This is how we're gonna follow it all out and this is what happens if there's an outbreak.
So Mr. Christie, I, I think what you're telling us, you tell me if I'm perceiving it wrong, is there's, there's four broad paths we can go down. And, and I'm gonna put words in your mouth, you don't have enough time in the day between now and mid-August to develop detailed plans for all four of these. So you all would like some direction from us as to what we think is the most likely plan you'd like to put your top emphasis on, so you could do the most planning down that path. You probably have contingency plans also. But, I mean, there's, there's only so many days between now and the middle of August. And you can't do full plans for all four of them and try to tie together another concept we have. You know, our role is more of a higher level direction and then we leave it up to you all to work out the details. And we might have, certainly we can give you opinion on those details, but I'm not sure it's our role to develop the details. And you're looking for us at this point in time, just give us some general direction as to which one of these four concepts of, that, that have been presented, do we feel the most comfortable with? Are those words I put in your mouth reasonably what you're saying?
Thinking, you know, is your feeling that you want as many kids as possible back in school?
Or do you not?
Or do you not? Or do you want us to, do you want us to work, work? We, we work the schedule, we're only half of them are in for, for a week or two days a week and the other half's in two days a week? Or do you not want anybody at all coming back right now under the conditions we're behind?
Well, I'll be asked, so let me ask you this, how, how, I know we did survey, put survey out, you know, you had 20, 22 hundred respondents. But how are you going to identify, who the students?
Registration, we do a registration where everybody has to register and in that, in that registration, they'll make a choice. If we're offering to come back, they'll make the decision, is my child gonna come back or am I, or am I gonna request an alternate set? That's part of the registration, we do district-wide.
So are you gonna put a timeline on that? Because you're gonna have to plan, if you have, say, 15%, say 15% of the students at high school plans to do NTI. Obviously you're gonna plan for those 15% at high school and different percentage at each school. So you're gonna put a timeline on, hey, you know, I've, I've registered, I'm gonna do virtual, I'm, I'm gonna, as a student, I'm gonna do virtual. I wanna be.
You say a timeline of how long do they stay on virtual?
No, no, like, I was a school district, I saw that it was in a different state, but people were signing up for virtual, to, to learn virtually this, this first fall semester, so to speak, okay? You had to register by, today was deadline. That way, the, that way the district knew right in front that, do we have these being kids in each grade level of who's gonna do? And, and, you know, there's gonna be a few people that probably, probably late register. But that gives you plenty of time to put your, your academics in place, hire the appropriate people if you need to, and address that. If you wait till registration, do you have enough time to accommodate that if you have an influx of people at that time to say, hey, I wanna, I don't wanna go, I don't wanna go to school, I'm gonna do virtual?
The registration has been planned to help happen sooner than later. That's not something we're waiting till August to do, we're wanting to get started on our registration. But kinda just felt like we needed to be able to say in there, here are your options. And I don't, you know, if you don't give some options, and I guess that's my question, is what options as a board do you want us to be able to give? If I don't give some options, they'll be all over the place.
To me, Plan A is the one that gives the most options. It gives you, you can do either or, virtual or.
Well, Plan A or Plan B, the difference between Plan A and Plan B is.
Plan C's the only thing that's gonna require anything anymore. A, B, and D can all work together. They're basically all working togeth, I mean, you could combine all of those things. C, when you start talking about taking half of a student body, now you're starting to, to talk about.
Problem in the elementaries because you've got to split the district.
That, that's where you start getting with a lot more. And if you invest more time in that and it doesn't work, then you've really done a lot. So to me, the other three have got the most merit as far as working everything together. Because I, I, I mean, we're all talking about putting, you know, kids in seats and then, you know, some sort of, if you're around a hybrid or something along those lines. You know, I think Mr. Tobbie's got a real good point there when he talks about, you know, with the kids saying they're gonna stay home for virtual. I mean, what do you do with the kid that looks at your mom one morning and says, Mom, I'm gonna go to school today, I'm gonna do it online? I don't know what, you know, I, I mean, again, I don't do.
We're gonna be able to deal with parents and say after a week, mine's not gonna come back.
Right, I, I mean, you know, there's.
Been increasing cases, not coming back. So we're gonna have to be flexible enough that now we've got to put another one on.
I, I think the one great thing, and make sure that I'm correct on this that I asked you today, is that, that there's already an executive order that basically forgives us of attendance for this year. So in other words, this year, what happens in these first months right here is not gonna affect our seat money coming into the 21, 22 school years.
As, as long as the virtual that we're doing, that we have, that we can validate that we're making contact with those students and it doesn't have to be on a daily basis, it's gonna be as it was, as we ended the year. So none of these should affect your funding if we do the virtual.
So what happens if 10% of our kids don't enroll in school? Do we lose that funding or how do we, I mean, do we revert back still to that 18, 19? I mean, I keep hearing talk all the time of parents wanting to do private school or homeschool and.
I think daycare's gonna be a huge issue for us.
Well, I think, I think you're right. I think there's just some things that, you know.
And that's why some of these lend themselves better to helping with the daycare situation for a family where some put more pressure on that for a family.
Would it benefit us at all to do a survey from each school? It doesn't seem like the, the one survey sent out got as much response as I would have liked to have seen. But I think, like I had one parent say that she has two kids, well, one she'd be perfectly fine sending and the other one, no, she wanted to keep him at home, you know, for health issues, so.
Which we've been dealing with as well, both, I mean, we had one that, that I sent to Paul.
Yeah, so I don't know if that would help us.
You're gonna have the family that has one, that has health issues and they're concerned about their other students getting going to school and bringing.
Bringing them home, yep.
So now you've got three that may not be here, so. The, the survey that we did, it accounted for 2,255 responses, but that accounted, when you go back and look at the parents that had multiple kids, it accounted for about 3,900 students of the 55. So it was about 70 some percent of their student bodies that it counted.
But it still didn't answer, I mean, what you said, I mean, because, you know, they're answering that for one student.
Right.
They have to do them multiple schools.
Right, she was saying that it would have been nice.
They only do one survey for that, and so I can see a little bit what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, some of the questions asked, it asked you how many kids and what schools they went to. So you did answer for.
It was one survey.
Yeah, but you couldn't, you change your responses.
Couldn't change your answer for each kid.
And pick one or the other.
Yeah, right.
You had to, and, and I can see where that can be an issue for some.
Well, at least you would know how many kids, you know, Concrete was gonna have or how many Campbell might have or.
No, that's, that's the next step to bring the administration.
And then maybe you don't have as many that feel comfortable going, so the issue of the mask, you know, becomes, because that's a big, that's a big thing for these kids to wear it all day long. Big deal.
I'm sure, I don't know if anybody else looked at it, but KD put forth just this afternoon at 2:00 their new recommendations for opening school, what they expect.
Their new ones?
Brand new ones, cleaning, and it deals with cleaning and sanitation, facility utilization, building systems, emergency response drills, vehicular traffic control, drop-off and dismissal, student arrival, student dismissal, building security, sample site inventory, worksheets, and custodial checklists. And then it goes through a nine-page dissertation of each of those as to what they are now saying is appropriate for temperature checks, whether it be pre-bu, preboarding of the bus before they go to school or once they get into school. So they've updated all that four hours ago.
What's that they changed?
Nothing changed, didn't they change that if you didn't have to on the bus?
Did not have to on the bus, but had to at the end of the school season.
Yeah, but now they.
That's what I'm saying, this is the new, and that's what bothers me about throwing something out here right now, what's the new tomorrow? And what's the new next week? And.
Now it is just that the students will have their temperature screened upon entry to the facility. However, each district must determine if they will screen the riders at the bus stop before they get on.
And you have that option.
If so, then they will not need to be screened at the school. If they disembark, then they will not need to be done. And if you choose to screen all students at a building entry, then a health screening station must be established within the facility, near but not blocking each entry that's gonna be used for student arrival.
Those don't have to be documented, in other words, it does.
Only, only if they exceed 100.4.
I mean, if a student comes in and.
You can check, please, you don't have to have it.
I just, you know, I'm going to physical therapy on a regular basis right there, there's people walking in, the lady goes around and checks them and their temperatures range anywhere from 91 to 104. That was the problem, it just, what do you, I mean, you know, you come in and, you know, you get 94, what do you score? You're good, 94, and but maybe the longer. I mean, I, I don't know. Again, something else, and I hate to keep throwing things out here.
That's the problem with the bus stops, you got kids that stand it out and sometimes when they get on the bus at 8:00, 7:30, it's already starting to get warm, kids are running, playing. You check the temperature of a kid getting on the bus, it could be, but it has to be greater than 100.4 before they're labeled as.
But we're not documenting, nobody's responsible for whoever's got the.
No, because that was early on, the discussions of the liabilities. You know, we checked more and said it was, you know, 98 and then all of a sudden by 10:00 o'clock they've got 102. And we said they had a 98 temperature when it came in the building, who's liable when the temperature went up while they were in school? There's, there's some legislation I think being passed on that the whole school is harmed or something on that.
It, it truly seems to me like the, the direction that I would give, or my position as a board, is that Plan A is the primary thing you all should plan for. A critical part of that is to offer remote learning as an option for certain parents. And that's, you know, that's, that's critical that we offer that. So people know they don't have to homeschool, they don't have to go to a private school, but we, we can take care of them and stay within our ecosystem. But tying in what Mr. Tobbie also talked about, we, along those lines, we're probably, y'all are probably gonna need to identify those numbers, you know, a lot sooner than, than later. So I think today is probably too early, obviously the middle of August is too late. And that way you can then start planning your staffing along through that. Of course, knowing that the whole thing is terribly fluid and it might change. But if from my standpoint, I think we wanna have, we wanna have the, give the opportunity to have a full education to as many kids as possible. to have a full education to as many kids as possible in, in the classroom, but that have a very viable option of remote learning if parents choose that.
And maybe we should update our website to let them know that we have purchased the Chromebook so that they, they're informed and they know that that's been approved and that we have.
More than for the.
I, I think you make a really good point with the saying, I don't know if you all know if you've been to the magazine, if you get as well, too, and Kristi, I'm not sure if you saw, this is considered the average cost of reopening the school during COVID. And I'm sure numbers have been inflated or whatever. It goes like, this is supposed to be for a district to write 3,600 students with eight schools, so 183 classrooms, 329, it was obviously a little bit small. It has that $1.7 billion to open that up now. The good thing about this is that there's a lot of things on this list that we have done in the past, that we have, like, you know, full-time nurses at every school, like the follow machines. There's a lot of things on here that we haven't. So I, I'm not sure, you know, if we went and, and somebody has broke down all of those additional costs that we have, that looks like a pretty good page. It goes everything for how much you want to spend, all the hand sanitizers, disinfecting wash, the monitors, which we've talked about, electrostatic disinfecting sprayers, is that what that is? Okay, what's that what that is? I mean, that's $33,000 on this list. We've already done it. Nurses, that we've done, additional blood, masks, additional aids for a bus, but if you don't have to do anything on the bus, we.
That was the key, that's the reason we, we ended up where we are on with the buses and the camera system, and run that through CDC, that was acceptable in place of having a monitor on the bus.
And I think, you know, that was a, that was a really good list that I, that I saw, because the first number just kind of hit me, you know, when we say we got 1.5 billion, who cares that? And I see a 1.7, but when I started going through the list, there's a lot of things that we've done over the last four or five years that probably has taken away, you know, most of a million dollars.
Until they changed the temperature check on the buses, when they changed that, they saved us 20, 22 million.
Right, I figured that was.
They saved us 22 million when they, when they took the temperature being taken off the bus.
But I would like to see, you know, on that money from CARES Act, if we could get a breakdown of just exactly what we've spent, what we're spending at all, and, you know, maybe look through some of this, what other things, principal, what do they think they need, you know, how much? I know we normally buy hand sanitizers, and most, I guess most of us have hand sanitizers, I don't know if they put additional ones out there. But, you know, we'll be spending a lot more money on hand sanitizers than what they have in fact, so we got to look at that. Been proactive with the water fountains, with the lotters.
We put hand sanitizers.
One of the KSVAs asked to bring your own bottle if you could, so, I mean.
We put the, for the hand sanitizers, like you see over here, are strategically located in all the buildings. We look to put them on the bus, but you can't mount, there's no place to mount that in a bus. So the bus drivers actually want to have a bottle and actually squirt it in. They have to have hand sanitizer when they come on the bus, they, they still do that.
So you have to have each kid have hands.
They have to come on the bus and get a hand sanitizer.
Businesses.
Just imagine trying to be a bus driver when you've got a busload of elementary kids in their seats, and now probably that much above the head of their elementary kids, have you verify without a monitor who's wearing a mask or two is, because if they're wearing a mask, you can put two or three to a seat. If they're not wearing a mask, they'd be six feet apart. So we're looking at probably a same seat, or a couple of same seats. That's probably, yes.
I'm just going through the new KDE document, just a quick question. Is there any schools that we have that are in need of HVAC? Or they all, I mean, is there any issues with that?
Phoenix doesn't have, Phoenix doesn't have, I'm sorry, preschool doesn't have air handlers like we've got in buildings. And Norwood is Phoenix. That's the only two we've got that doesn't have fresh air. That's only two buildings we have that doesn't have fresh air.
Maybe one of, since this just came out this afternoon, I've had a chance to look at it, but there's a guideline that if we need to address.
There's going to be 15 documents put out starting last week or the next two weeks. 15 documents, one for every area. That's logistics, there's another transportation that's already out, there's one for food services already out, there's one for healthcare that's coming out. So there's a document for, like what he was reading there, for every area of the school, that you have to meet those guidelines, and that's what we use, that's what we're using as our guidelines.
I think one of the bright spots that we actually have is our HVAC system. The, we spent a couple of years ago, really, except for those older buildings, really put us in good shape to be able to modulate the fresh air quantity and the regulate the humidity, et cetera. So that's one thing we can actually be happy about.
Well, if we need to address it, those are the.
And that comes back to, you know, we, we're going to meet the facility committee, we're going to meet on January 2nd, July 2nd, July 2nd, we're coming back together to meet, and we're going to do virtually, and the option to come in person virtually, so that, we're going to start forward with that. And KDE released their folks to come to do the meetings for us. So we can go back to that meeting on Thursday, December 2nd, was the earliest we could get that. You got to look at, one school you're talking about that doesn't have that is, have a Florida, you want to go in and drop 200,000 or more on fresh air to a building that we may or may not continue to use.
So that's those schools a lot more than since were, when they went out, actually.
So that was, one came out, one of the first guidelines, KDE, was buildings that don't have fresh air return like we do, they were doors and windows. Safe school jumped on that and real quick. That stopped that. We're ahead of the game.
Well, I suppose, I mean, on my end, I'd like to see, go ahead and do Plan A, but allow changes to bring in some of Plan B and C, or whatever he needs, to kind of start with Plan A, to at least start somewhere.
Yeah, I agree. I like Plan A with ability, I'd like to see some details on, you know, how you're going to address health issues, kids need to sign up, register. Because, I mean, if you have an influx of kids that's going to register and do virtual, then that helps you plan for social distancing within the schools, too. You know, you may not have, you know, may not have the biggest issue within the schools that you have kids doing virtuals.
That was the reason for Plan B, where you only brought K through 6 in, in, in total, and 7 through 12 was half and half, because those are your biggest schools, that's where you're going to have the largest problem with social distancing.
I would like to see as many kids come back, you know, feel comfortable. I think it's important if they feel comfortable, and, you know, we're doing everything we can to create a safe environment, that they, you know, that they, they feel safe coming to the schools, they, you know, there's lots of social interactions within the schools. I just think you get, you can get, you get better education, you know, one-on-one in the classroom. And I think there's a lot of other benefits by attending school, and not virtually. But we, at this time, we got to give parents options and students options.
And in, whether it's in attendance or whether it's online, we will work within, operate within CDC guidelines, whatever those guidelines at the time are, and we can, we can lessen those or tighten them up as we need as we go, because they change. Like I said, they change almost daily.
Plan A, you know, I'm, I'm for all the kids getting back in school if they're comfortable with it. I like Mr. Perdido's idea of using an NTI day, I don't know, once a week or something, just to have that break in there, even if you have to go longer on the day even, I'm, I'm not sure. But I think if they had a break on a middle of the week and could sanitize things really well, that might help.
I think that would help, and I, I would rather the language be in there, rather than you've got your choice of coming back to school or not. You can have an appeals process, and you can write something to say why your student is not coming. Because I think if you just start saying, well, you know, he's.
It has to be free or any, and that was.
So I think there needs to be, like, you know, we're starting back to school, but there is an appeals process if you have a valid reason for why, you know, and it could be anywhere from, you know, your own personal religious views or something, to a doctor's excuse, or something along those lines. But rather than just having somebody come in and say, yes, I want to do this, or no, I want to do that, I mean, I think you might open yourself back up. But I think if you do incorporate your NTI in there and say, you know, we're going to come back to school for three days, and we're going to take two days, I keep saying off, we're not taking off, we're going to do two days NTI. And, you know, and that doesn't affect our attendance or anything else in there. But I think we have got to incorporate that in there, because you have to be prepared for the fact if we shut schools down. And that way you're already prepared with the virtual learning at that point, so we're, we're ready to, ready to do that. But I do want to see a plan that addresses a lot of the things that we've heard here tonight, as far as loading, unloading kids, what happens when a case breaks out. And I'm not so sure it would be bad if we could do a work session that, you know, we had somebody from the Health Department here that we could ask some questions of.
This week, they'll, they'll be attending all of our, our meetings in person, starting this week.
I just think, you know, if you, if you had it here and it's online, parents can see this, this is a Health Department thing, and maybe we can do something like, if parents want to submit questions, you can submit your questions, we'll ask that health person on that night, and they can answer that. I don't know, I, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing.
Sort of like the webinar.
Something, something along those lines right there, if there was somebody that was willing to come in and.
I think it would probably take four or five somebodies, you know, from schools, because there could be school-related questions and.
Well, I, I mean, you know, I, I would want, you know, basically for that, but maybe that's just, you know, the, the health-related ones, you know, what are schools going to do when you have a case? And, you know, you know, some people may even want, you know, what are the symptoms? I mean, you know, a lot of people don't get access to information if they may watch this, and maybe, you know, maybe beat the dead horse, because a lot of people that don't have the internet won't be able to see it maybe, but at least, you know, if you recorded it or whatever else, you could show it back in an open house, or put it on the website, some of those types.
That was another bright spot in the surveys that, that kind of surprised me, that 96% of the survey respondents said they had internet.
As you're in 4%.
But if you took.
They didn't do the survey.
If you took the survey, you had internet. In other words.
Not necessarily going to.
Well, but I'm just saying that, that.
Not good internet.
But I may have took smartphone as internet service, and we, what we, we learned, we've probably been clear, specified, you're talking about computers, or you're talking about this phone service internet. It would be much more difficult to do some of the NTI work off of a cell phone.
That's how I took my survey off.
I would like to see a trial run on the, on the virtual learning, just so we can get an idea of who you connect, and what's going to happen, assuming that the teachers.
Well, we've got that information from who was able to connect, and we did.
But I mean, if you're a teacher, I mean, now that everybody has a computer, and I've got 21 kids out there, would I be able to know if all 21 kids are on there? So I mean, you've got that information, whereas for, we didn't really have that kind of.
They just had, either had connected or they did, they got the.
If you got a situation where you say, well, Joe's not been on here, somebody may need to do a check on this and see what's happening. But I would like to see a plan on how we're going to ensure that the computers, how, you know, how we're going to check the, the access for that, and, you know, then the details of the school. I do think Plan A is flexible enough that we can incorporate a lot of other things in, and I think, you know, even like what you mean, fully aware of, to say, I don't need a computer, I have a real idea of it. It's acceptable. And again, I don't want to step in there until virtual's time to do the job, you know, but they've got to do it, they've got to sell it.
In conversation, you give me what I need to move forward.
So yeah, Plan A with a little Plan B and a little Plan C. Can you make that work, Paul?
It'll make it work.
So do you need?
No, I don't think there's some, I didn't necessarily need.
Okay.
I just wanted.
That's the way it's worded.
And we put it that way just in case there's something.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I think, of course, I, you know, just watching when they did the four days a week anyway, was it Florida last year? And so, so I like that anyway, but. So I would be fine with a day and 22 if that would help. Okay, so then, moving on. Dorothy, you want to go first on out of number three?
Number three.
I know you were ready for it, too. Or I can let Kristy Bush start, Sal. This, discussion and consider approval of calendar modifications for the 2020, 2021 school year. Basically, what changed, Kristy?
Okay, on options one, two, and three, there are four major changes. Election day has different, because if you choose, since it's a presidential election that particular this year, you must either pay overtime or some type of compensation for your staff to work, because it's a presidential election. And that is KRS 2.19. So we added that day to take care of the budget. All teacher workdays that were throughout the year, and there were four, have been front-loaded into every one of them. So whatever day you choose to start, you will have opening day plus four teacher workdays to start with organizations, or trainings, or drive rides, practice rides, however you want to talk about that, with your staff. The next is there's no fall break, which can be changed. But the committee thought at that time, if we have our kids in, let's get them here and get them academically going until and if, you know, something happens again and we're not in school and have to stay out. That was the only reason that the fall break was taken off on all three of us. But if, once again, if you add it back in, in two days, add it at the end of the year. Your 162, the Monday closest to August 26th can waive your days expected for school, so that is why the calendars are at 162. Now that can be added back to 170 or our traditional 170/30s, whatever you feel comfortable with. Obviously, the start and stop times are, you know, they'll change on each one. But those are the four major differences from what you have already proved, starting on August 12.
I was starting to say that I am in favor of option number three. I was telling you all that, I think we let some other school districts start out, we start after Labor Day.
School's starting on the 8th?
Yes, and getting out on the 20th.
You staying with, you're talking about staying with the 162?
Yes.
I certainly respect your thoughts, but I, I think we ought to start, I think we ought to back it up a week to give us the flexibility, but we ought to start as early as possible to give us the time for things to happen. You know, kind of like you're going to take a trip to Florida, you know, you leave at 10:00 in the morning, you ought to get there at a certain time of night, and that's when you're going to, you know, plan dinner, that's great. But if you leave at 8:00 in the morning, it gives you a lot more flexibility on there. And I think there's so many unknowns that are going to happen during the year. The later we start school, that just reduces the options that we have. That's my perspective.
Mr. Christie, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be that option three, just to give other schools a chance to give approval, and see what they're doing, how that works, that gives us an extra couple of weeks if there are problems, if there's any kind of an outbreak, that gives us time to prepare for that. If, if you're concerned about the 1,062, like she said, you could add some days at the end of that year, just to move it on out. And that way you don't lose instruction with age, we're not necessarily saying, because you choose to start about after the 20th, kind of after the 24th, and you're just automatically locked into 1,062 hours. You can still go more than 1,062 days. You could add four or five days at the end of the calendar, gives you some more flexibility at the end of the year, which is probably not going to matter this year, because they're already done a way of testing. That gets you some more educational time in there. I like the idea, two, of getting out in May. I think this year, we're going to need this coming summer, next summer, we're going to need to look at some, some summer schools, or do some things, make up some time, some timelines. We've already experienced, we couldn't do it this summer, but maybe by next summer, we'll have that opportunity. Gives us 1,062 hours, that gives you some time to start earlier in the semester, talk about some summer schools, people planning vacations around those time points, and earlier we can put that out there. Like she said, we got to add, that we got to front-load those days for the teachers up front, pay for whatever day, whatever, thank you all, to, to front-load the teachers.
This also changed Phoenix, too, right? Isn't that what Ellen was trying to tell us the last time?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
I think that could be a really good question.
Yes.
The teacher work day, I mean, I'm assuming that once a teacher signs a contract, that work year begins in July. Is that correct?
You can, yes.
That's what I'm saying is that, you know, you know, it may be beneficial this year to use, and I see you have some of those on the calendars there as well, teacher work days, you know, teachers coming in during before school and using part of that. They have, what, 185 days per hour, teachers in. Now, is that, they got holidays in the fact?
That's, yes.
They have four holidays and.
What? 187.
187, four holidays in there. So actual days that they're required to do these schools is coming in.
183.
Last year was our first year in 173. They had to face the price. Their contract is still 187. So they had to fill.
Right. What I'm saying is that this could be a year that we could put some of those workdays on the front. If you're looking at the 21 days and that we could really use teachers to help us with communicating the plan that we have. You know, personally, as far as me, I like the block for the labor start day. I like it just simply because I think it, you know, again, we got a new directive from KD that, how many more new directives are there? You know, you don't have to worry about weather because we've already got unlimited of NTI days. So any weather day is already turned into a, to an NTI day. But you don't have to spread those out. You don't have to worry about the flu even on top of this back there because we already got NTI days in there built in with that. And the other thing, if there is that executive order where, you know, that our attendance is not going to take a hit on any of this this year, I mean, we need to understand that. See, in past years, we're all the same. We got to be in school, got to make sure we got enough kids, we got to have 90 something percent in school. We're not that way this year because, you know, we're overboard in so much on safety, which we should have been making sure. But I think we have a lot of.
We've already been approved on the NTI, on our NTI plan for unlimited days, the plan.
Yeah, I, I, I like that idea of watching somebody else open up, see what their issues are. You know, but I still think we have to take advantage of those NTI days. And you know, you know, some of these have got to start, I think this one has to start on Tuesday, you know, whether it's a Wednesday.
The third one is on Tuesday, I think.
It starts right after Tuesday. Wednesday, we'll have to call and see.
Tuesday, the 8th.
It starts almost a month late from what we probably have scheduled.
First thing, Tuesday, the 8th. I mean, even at that, you know, it wouldn't bother me to see an NTI day at the end of that week. I mean, just because, you know, I tell you, opening school is always tough. And I loved it when I was in districts and boards voted for calendars that started kids on Wednesday. You got three days, you went hard and then you crashed. And I think it's going to be even tougher if you try to keep them in for four and five days this year. And I would, you know, when you look at your, in your plan, I'd look to throwing some of those NTI days in there to, to give you a break in there.
That was my only concern about taking out the fall break is because that did help. That's a seven week stretch, six to seven, if you take out the fall break. And I just thought it would have been nice to.
And that's easy to put a Friday or a Friday and Monday back in.
Isn't that what we decided on the original calendar?
The original calendar was the 16th on a Friday of October and then also the 19th.
So that would be in the middle. That would help break it up.
You know, if you had to announce NTI days, I think that makes, and even if you put NTI days in there, because it really doesn't make any difference if the student is doing the work here or in Murph.
In Florida, right. That's right.
It's the same, it's the same thing. So.
So you're saying if we could put NTI days like.
Now I have to come back with a plan.
Right.
Put an NTI day at that.
And then I think, you know, if something, you know, the miracle happens and all this goes away, we can always come back and change calendar after that. We can come back in and say, you know, well, we're going to take a fall break because of this or whatever. And you still have the luxury, you know, you've got the NTI days to make up for your weather.
So we would show the NTI days on the calendar like.
Well, I think that has to come within the plan. The plan.
Okay.
Now, the calendar, I mean, they're in school. I mean, you know, except for school with three days, we're going four days that first week. Well, one of those may be an NTI day, but it's still, but I think you give that information out to parents when that plan is developed and say, we're going to be going to school for three days, we're going to do two NTI days.
That's what I was going to ask Gordy. So yeah, so when we said we were going to put B and A on plan on the, on number one, two here, didn't we say that kind of directed to go?
Well, we kind of said that plan needs to be fluid. That, I think everybody wants to see, you know, even parents for that part, want to see kids in seats. And we want to see how this goes. But I think you're going to have to, to put some NTI. And for parents, you know, they need to know when they need childcare. What are you going to do? Of course, then again, we got to think too, you know, I mean, you got, you know, our came through secretary don't have the computers, right? So, I mean, that has, that's another issue altogether. Is Steve out there beating himself?
That's somebody doing fireworks.
That's what Shafar works in. I don't know what he's doing out there. Hopefully I'll shoot.
Fine, go out and check.
I'm sorry, Plan C.
So what's the rationale on cutting the days? I mean, 2017, 18, we were at 176 days. And then we backed it to 173 days. And now you're all taking it down to 162 days. Why can't we stay at 173 days and give parents some money?
The, the reason for going to the 1062 hours was to ensure that, and, and this keeps coming from the governor, to rest assured legislature, or I will take care of you on the NTI days. Well, something happens and they don't, they limit the number of NTI days and we're out for a month or two and they only give you 20 days, then you've got a bunch of days to make up.
Well, why don't we plan for 173 days and then just see how it goes?
That's what I said. If you want more days, you can add them to the end of the calendar and, and then you, you know, you've got the option of, if you do have a lot of COVID issues that are still going on at the end, you could, you're not obligated to do the 172 or 71 we did last year.
So if you chose calendar three, your 173 days would be June the 7th for the last day?
And I think that's a more realistic description of this, of, of the level of education we try to convey to our kids in the last couple of years, is that starting almost a month late means we would leave, that if we gave them the same number of days, we'd be out June 7. I personally think that's too late. I think it's too late to push our calendar back almost an entire month versus what we have right now. But it seems like I'm in the minority on that opinion, but you know, it's okay.
We're still talking. We're still talking.
No, I mean, I see your, I see your point. And I'd want to get kids in as quick as possible and make sure, you know, make sure it's in safe, in a safe way, safe as possible. Because I don't really care for bringing them in a month later. The difference between option two and option three is one week. So I would either go with option one or option, option three. There's a lot of valid points on being able to wait and see kind of what happens with some other school districts. But at the same time, what does that do for our kids and education? Are the kids just waiting? I know a lot of things reopened today. Was it today, the first day for certain things? 3:50 and some other places being opened. I think we'll know real quickly if, if option one's even feasible or any of these options would be feasible. We'll have to go up to maybe NTI. But I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in favor of, of getting the kids in and option one. There's a lot of valid points for option three, but again, it's almost a month later. Not sure exactly what that helps our kids. But and then we're going into the fall. If this does come back around, we just have to go the NTI days. I just.
Is an option two kind of in the middle of one and three?
Well, yes.
You got two without one. You want to go and wear the other, honey. I'm sorry.
So if you chose option two, 173 days, your last day of school is May 28th.
So that's, that's very comparable to what we did this year, right? I mean.
Would have been.
Yeah.
You're talking about starting on Monday, the 31st.
Yeah. I mean, that's not quite as late as Labor Day, but it's not quite as early as in this.
Four weeks.
Well, yes, which I really wouldn't be in, in favor of. But now that would be like Mr. Perdido said, if we could incorporate those NTI days.
I'm starting on that.
Well, I still think you need to go, I, I still would like to kind of get them in and, and this way it doesn't push them till June getting out. But.
I'm not in favor of getting them there either. I think once you go past May, you're, you're done. That's why I say, we're going to have a hard enough time this year getting these kids in, getting up, they've had, they've struggled.
But they've lost six months worth of education already. Yeah. So.
And I agree with that too.
That's hard.
I mean, I think you get them in too quick. You're.
Well, again, I go back to the point you said about people that the planings are this and the way things are changing. The more you delay, the more you can see in market. And that's not to say that the people have already, and most people that I've seen have went back and changed to like the 26th or something like that. But that's not to say that in a month, they don't come back and change again. And that can, that can always happen in there. I just, you know, think if we have an opportunity to learn from others, I think that helps us. I, you know, I don't think that you can say any of these are bad or any of these are great. I think there's a, there's a valid reason for all of them or a valid reason not to put any of them in there. There's a lot of merit in being in school for 170 some days. And there's a lot of merit to that. But again, it's not normal time either.
Right.
So if we did, if you looked at option two, you start on, you started on, the first day for students would be the 31st and then possibly do like a, sort of an NTI day on the 4th. And then you got election day on the, is that right?
It's a three day weekend right there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know where y'all put that.
Well, just a reminder, option one, option one's already pushed us back 12 days. And option two pushes us back 19 days. I mean, it's not like option one is what we currently have. It's already started. They've already given us some delay.
Right.
Yes, sir.
I just, you know, I.
My fear is this will come back and say, oh, we got to change it again. And we're going to go to the 8th anyway. So then we change it on these parents again.
And I've expressed, I think the sooner we start, the more, it gives us more flexibility to, to navigate bumps that are going to come up in the road. And they will.
And that's why, and on this trip, you would be leaving at 8 and I'd be leaving later. We know this.
Well, I'd like to leave at 8.
So you would be calling me and telling me about your bumps. And I'd be like, all right, Scott. Thanks for the.
And I will leave at 8 and I'm going to get into Knoxville. There's a bit of traffic jam there. And, and I'm glad I left 8.
And I will leave at midnight and get there at the same time because you're going to call and warn me about the traffic jam.
All right. What time is bus getting us?
See what I'm saying?
They're scenarioing.
I don't know. I like a later start just simply because of what I think we can learn from, from other people.
So you, so you'd like to see us, would you like to see us go the 173 days?
You know, I always feel like, you know, the board can, you know, adopt, you know, the calendar or change, modify the calendar anytime we want to. And I mean, I think, you know, you can come out here in October and say, listen, this is going great. And we need to make sure that we've got school days here that we can put on the end. And I mean, I'm not opposed to two or three either. And I think one's getting us here a little bit too early. I think the date we have right now is way too early. But I, I'm not opposed to, to either one of the others. And I think there is valid that when kids are going to school or being in school as much as possible. And would like to think that if you had to amend the calendar, if things were going well, that we would come back or the next board would come back and amend that to say, you know, guys, we're going to extend school for another week.
If it means anything, the principals were in unanimous consensus on the Labor Day, after Labor Day, because they felt for the reasons we talked about here. They gave at least a couple of, three weeks extra time there to make plans, to see what's going on and to talk to other places. But we're seeing a lot of people that here in this last week and this week are changing to that Labor Day time. So I don't.
But if we approved the 173 days, are they as fond of that as going to June?
I don't think the days, I, I don't think most states care. How many days ago is going to make a difference right there? I really don't think they'll.
See, the only reason we would get out so early to get to 1062 is because we go a longer day than most places do anyway. If we shorten their day to what most people are doing, that day would go, instead of the 6th or whatever it was, would go to the 12th or the 15th or the 18th.
We're on the 13th.
We go about 14 days more in time than we need to, than we're, not than we need to. We don't go as much as we probably do need to. We go more, seven or eight days more than the law requires our, our time.
So the 162 is what the law requires?
Yes.
And you'd like to see us go 173?
There was a slogan that you used to be centered about this. We don't, we don't want to be a minimum district.
Yes. I know Jenny Piss is yelling at me right now and I know that.
You, you can, you can measure quantity and you can measure quality too. So I mean, that, you know, that's what you got to get into as well. And, you know, do I think the teachers can deliver in the time they've got? Yeah, I believe that they can. I'm a believer in teachers. And, you know, is there merit into going to 170? Obviously, there's 175, 80, whatever day, 175 days up to what it comes out to 1062. There's a, there's a, there's a reason why somebody put that out there. They thought that was optimal or whatever to be able to do. And, you know, we do the extra time, the extra hours and those things and deliver quality during those times. You know, I think 162 is really, really short. I, I do agree with that. But I would like to think that, you know, if this turns into back a normal year, that we would go back and change that. Maybe, maybe I'm just being starry eyed or whatever. But again, I'm not opposed to the, the second calendar either. That's a weak layer, but I think you're getting like what Mr. Christie says, how many other people are going to say, you know, we're going to push ours back too. And, and I really, as a principal, I'm trying to think in, in my terms of principal, you know, right now, you've got people that have been principals for, for 20 years that know how to open school that right now, they don't know how to open school. They've got nothing. They can't go back in the days they went to school. They can't go back in the days when they were teachers. They can't go back and draw on any experience when they were principals. The only experience that our administrator is going to get is by watching some other district open up and see what happens. That's the only name that we're going to get. And, and I guess that's where my heart is going to them and thinking about, that's how they can learn.
So do we know what the other districts are doing around us? Has anybody set dates?
What we're doing. I mean, they.
So we're all going to be waiting on each other.
Right now. Fayette County, they're going to say they weren't going to start early, but they're going to do something different. I think Scott County has decided on the 26th, that week right in there. I, I saw a few others that have pushed ours back mostly into that week. Most people were starting about the same time we were. And most people have pushed it back two weeks, that what I've seen.
We did see that Franklin's starting early. I think it's seven, six or seven, but it's all NTI.
They're doing all of NTI. They're not bringing anybody back. They're going to start NTI. They're starting, they're doing, starting early, but no kids coming back.
If I was going to start early, I would start in.
There's a couple of districts that I don't know what they're doing.
Now, are they still on the year round school down there? Is that Franklin?
That's Franklin.
That's Franklin. And they're still. Mr. Hassel, I think if it was ordinary times, I completely agree with you on the amount of days. I just think right now, you know, adding more days, a week like.
Now, I'm not, I'm keeping the days that we had. I'm not, I'm not shortening change in our students and our, and our parents. I'm, I'm voting to keep the number of days we have. Yeah, not drop. And that gives us flexibility to drop down below that.
What if we changed on calendar three to the 21st as the end date versus the 13th? It's still be in May.
I don't think you most of them argue on the end date unless it goes up into June. I think what your problem is, is that, I mean, my whole concern is being ready to start it. That's, that's the biggest concern I have.
Mr. Hassel, did you say on the third calendar?
Yes, instead of the 13th, maybe to the 21st.
Are you talking in May?
Yes.
The end of the day? End the day, end the 13th.
Option three.
Option three. Oh, what am I on, sorry?
It's okay.
So ended on the 27th?
If you do the 162, the way you wrote 162, then you're going to end the school on May 28th.
Okay, so ended on the 28th then. That puts graduation on a Friday, which is what we like. That gets everybody out for Memorial Day.
Well, when would be the last day for teachers? Would they do that day?
No.
They would come back on June 1st.
Well, that would. If you add in, you're talking about adding seven days or?
Yeah.
Seven, seven more days to add.
And six or two hundred and sixty.
So can I ask a question?
So that's just less time that they would have to teach a work day.
Yeah. So if you have approval for the NTI days, and let's say it snows, can you, instead of having a snow day, can you say that's an NTI day? Okay.
Whatever day you set for the last days will be the last day.
Yeah.
Some other kind of thing comes along or what else? Because, see, in the past, you would watch districts, you'd watch other districts, they would be careful about where they put their NTI days because they only know they only had 10. So you want to make sure, you know, like if you missed a day before Christmas, you probably wouldn't take an NTI day because you're waiting to see what happens afterwards. And then you get a big snow, you know you're going to be out for a week, so you ain't taking an NTI. So you count those. But now, we've got unlimited NTI, so anytime there's a snow day, you know, we've already got our kids conditioned to take their computers home at that time. So that becomes.
That could be a positive.
An NTI.
Yeah. Because that, I mean, that goes on and adds the days on there, but you can always take it off if you needed to, if something happened. Because I don't like adding them on, like setting the calendar and then going back and saying, okay, well, we'll change our mind. You want to go, we're going to add you through to 10.
I, I agree with that.
Because then you're really going to set people off.
I don't see why, because I, I mean, it is unusual this time where you can say whatever your last day is now is going to be your last day.
Yeah, I say we set it, and then you can always take off if you need to take off.
Gives you seven more days, seven, six or seven days.
Six.
So it gives you, go take that to 168, is that correct?
Well, I think if the NTI days can be worked in there, I think you, because like Mr. Perdido said, they can learn from any location. That just.
But the best location is in our building.
It definitely is. I agree 100%.
From March 13th, I don't think we haven't been there. So I agree with Mr. Richie. At least we have a plan to address it.
I heard that with Mr. Ritchie, adding those six additional days on option three. That gives us, you know, a few more extra instructional days, it's not the 172, but it ends on Friday. Teachers are out June 1st, which is probably later than one, but we're starting a lot later too, so.
Yeah, that's not 172 days inside school, that's just 172 days for annual construction. Something could happen. We may not have the instruction from our public duty center in school, that'd be all first. We have to prepare for it, so. I'm glad we're doing that on this conference. I think that's a good suggestion.
Last day would be.
Three.
We do start.
We'll start the 8th.
On the 8th.
And get out.
Last day for students is the 28th.
28th.
Teachers, what do you think?
That will traditionally come up as the first, this holiday is the third. Now, fall break at this time, and we have to take all working NTI schedules in.
And I'd like, you know, I think this year, I'd like to see a plan on which point those people are school, how, how we want to move on these teachers. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes. I'm a gentleman. So I'll make the motion to adopt option number three with changing the end date from May 20th to May 28th.
Mr. Ritchie, can I ask you a question? Does that imply that we would do 168 instructional days?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor say aye, I'm opposed.
I'd like to respectfully say nay, because I think it's too late to start.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. Now, he starts in the 8th and the 10th. Thanks, Christie. All right, item number four.
Item number four is the, is the position that you, we added in the technology last week. I want to be clear, how many days your attention to that was. We didn't specify that in the meeting that night. We have two of them already employed. We have one at 220 and one at 240. My recommendation was going to be, that night was 220, but we didn't state it. So I wanted to go back and have that in the minutes somewhere, that that position would be a 220 day position or a 240 if you so choose. We have one of each right now employed.
What's the recommendation?
220. It's seven and a half hours.
We're not taking days away from anybody?
No, 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 no. This new position would be a 220, and we have two positions right now. And one's at 220, one's at 240, doesn't affect them, this is for the new person.
So the 240 is an eight-hour position?
Seven and a half, but it's 240 days.
All 240 days.
Yeah.
The other one's going to be 220 days?
This one, the one that I recommended last week, or that Justin and I recommended, was two for 220. And that will match up with one other, and we have 220. You have, already have two employed in the same exact position, one works 220 days, and one works 240.
I'm doing my math up here, so there's 220, that's 35 more days than what teachers are currently contracted for.
It's a lot of summer time work, but.
A lot of computers coming in.
Yeah.
You'd like to make a motion? Or have any more questions?
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, he just needed clarification since they had one of each. He's 220. He wants 220, yeah.
I'm voting saying that that would be a 220 day position or 240, I'm sorry.
Alicia's saying something.
Yes.
It's actually eight hours a day.
I'm sorry, eight hours, I didn't count that much.
Didn't count much.
Sorry, eight hours.
And we need to put 220, eight hours. Yes. We need to put that in there. That's what Asher said.
Thank you.
Alicia.
Alicia.
Everybody does that.
Yes, I was trying to get my microphone on, eight hours, 220 days.
Okay.
I'd move to approve the position of district technician, technology trainer to 220 days at eight hours a day.
Motion by Mr. Perdido.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Richardson. All those in favor say aye, opposed. Motion carries five to zero. All right, item number five is adjourned to closed session per KRS 61.810. Subsection 1K, meetings which federal or state laws specifically require to be conducted conducted in privacy for extreme liminary discussions for the superintendent's evaluation per KRS 156.557. Motion by Mr. Perdido.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tallon. All those in favor say aye, opposed. Motion carries five to zero, and we will take that. We only need five or 10-minute break, 10-minute break.
Just some break. So Scott, he gets 17, he gets extra time.
Yeah, he needs to, he needs to go plan it out. Let us know if there's any votes. The emotion to adjourn.
Well, first you need to say that you.
We are back in open session at 9:47 V.
And no action was taken in closed session.
And no action was taken in closed session. Okay, now we need a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Hassel. Second by Mr. Perdido. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes five to zero.